...of the City of Moscow City Council. The first thing I would like to do would be to point out the fact that this beautiful snow we're getting today and for the last twelve, twenty-four hours are the responsibility of the Moscow Chamber of Commerce. They are in charge of whether we're only in charge of moving it around once it lands on our streets and sidewalks. With that, I'd like to introduce to my right Dan Carskallen, council member and member of this committee, Art Bedecky, and the vacant chair is being filled by, will be filled, by Bill Belknap, who is sitting in as city supervisor these weeks while Gary Redner and his wife are touring the United States by vehicle, having a great time but haven't sent us any sunshine back from Florida. Okay.
There you are.
I'm Walter Steed.
That's right.
I didn't even know that. The minutes of the February ten meeting are the first item on the agenda.
Looked good to me. I would move their approval.
Bill will consider them approved. Second item, Moscow City Code Title VII, Chapter Nine, Proposed Revisions. Ty Thompson is going to speak to us about that. Has to do with backflow prevention, I believe.
That is correct. I have a copy of this. We had a short conversation with Mr. Steed and I this morning. So there's a very small revision and I'll have a copy for you there.
So you might want to start with what is backflow prevention and why do we have it at all?
Okay. First, I guess I'll start with cross connection. You know, that's the cross connection control program is where all this all stems for. Cross connection is the actual or potential connection to any part of the city's public drinking water system or any public or, excuse me, private parts thereof. So it's anywhere where a contaminant could possibly enter the drinking water system. Backflow is the process through which that could occur if water were to flow in the wrong direction. So all this is to prevent anything that we don't want in our drinking water system from getting there. So you have a packet in front of you with the ordinance detailing all the changes. Also included is an explanation of those proposed changes. I kind of wanted to lay it all out there. And I'm going to kind of follow that piece of paper, the proposed changes. It's kind of easier to look at, I think. The first section there, Section 9.2, is all definitions. A lot of those, we're just bringing those to be consistent with those of the Idaho Administrative Procedures Act. A few grammatical corrections and changes to citation, you know, to reflect where those definitions come from. For Section 9.3, you know, those are also, again, a small grammatical change. Changed the city engineer to public works director, you know, as the administrator, the actual head of the water department. So those are all minor changes. When we get to Section 9.4, some of the meat of the changes actually come in here. You can see, here's where this changed that I, the reason that I gave you these papers here is where it says 9.4A7R. We moved that section that deals with underground irrigation systems, lawn sprinklers, into the section where all of the other stuff that are specifics are listed. As I said, I had a brief conversation with Mr. Steed this morning and he asked why that wasn't in that section and I had no good reason for that. It makes sense. And that's part of the reason, while we were making some of the big changes that I'll get to, we decided to just do a little bit of house cleaning here. And so that ended up in that section. The main things that are really changing here and the reason that we are proposing these changes is Section 9.4G, which is on the back of the explanation page. We want to require tagging of all assemblies, backflow assemblies, that are tested in the city. The reason for this is, you know, there's a few different reasons, but the main one that kind of brought it on were assemblies being tested twice and people getting separate bills for that when it only needed to be done once. This is a way to get the information out there readily accessible for us as the water purveyor, the affected citizen, and the backflow assembly testers to know when one has been tested, who tested it, and what was the outcome of that test.
So it would be a tag similar to what you see on a fire extinguisher in a building?
I actually brought one with me, an example here, that if you guys would like to see. That is a waterproof paper that will, you know, hold up. If it's in an irrigation box, if it gets wet, it will stay around for a while.
So whether the city's testing or a private individual who's certified to do such testing, they will be expected to put that on?
That's right.
When they do it?
That's correct.
This is annually?
Yes. Yes, annually. And you know, and I've seen others, some of the other guys have them that are testers where there are multiple years on there. So they can just go and say December 2013 and punch it out and so they get multiple years' use out of it.
As long as they come back on the same day.
Right. Well, and you know, if it's not exactly the day, some guys have said that, you know, I have all of these that have got month on there but no day. Is that okay? And I have no problem with that. It gives the information and if we need to go get more details.
You get a copy of the test?
Correct.
So that you have it on file anyway from the tester?
That's right. That is correct. The other big change here that we addressed was the new change to the Idaho rules for public drinking water system that requires any failed assembly to be repaired, replaced, or isolated within ten business days. You can see in there, we left it, we just referenced that 5801-08. So then if there is changes, which there have been some rumblings that that ten days may change, it may be extended, but if that does occur, then we won't need to change our code. It will just, yeah, reference that section. And the last one that really could, that is a big change, is that we want to require reporting of failed assemblies within one business day to water department staff. The reason for that, we can't do anything about it or ensure that people affect the necessary repairs if we don't know about it. And so a report would be required to be filed with us at the water department as well as to the customer, who is the owner or user of that assembly, so that they are aware, so it doesn't sneak up on them where myself or another from the water department comes knocking on their door and asking why this hasn't been fixed. So the main points here, the main reasons for this, you know, a few updates of definitions, changing language to reflect the state code, a little reorganization, but the main thing was to make sure that there's effective communication between the water department staff, the affected citizens, and the testers as well.
Any questions?
Did you get the copy of my test?
Yes, I did. I appreciate it. Thanks for taking care of that.
Just to clarify, Ty, the only change from what was in the council packet is the B5 moving up into that list.
That's correct.
Okay.
As an ordinance, we probably need to put this on the regular agenda.
No question. It needs to go on regular because of the ordinance changes?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Yep. Okay. I presume we'll hear from you next Monday night, council?
Sounds good to me. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next item of business is a Moscow Mardi Gras grant application. Eric Newell and Lisa.
Didn't look like Eric shaved. Eric got a doctorate.
Eric's out of town. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Dwight Curtis playing the part of Eric Newell.
Yes.
So before you today, we have a request to submit an application to Moscow Mardi Gras and the funding would be used to provide you scholarships over and above the amount that's already included in the budget this year. Eric has requested $1,000 and that would be available for resident and non-resident scholarships. And just a footnote to that, since I've been here in 2008 through 2012, we've received $5,500 from Moscow Mardi Gras. So they've been very generous in helping provide these scholarships.
And that's what it's been used for previously?
Yes.
I would, I'm glad they accept our application every year and have awarded it every year since 2008, so I'm okay with it. I think it's a win-win. Absolutely, yes.
Anything else?
This is the easy one. Yeah.
I think we'll consider this for concern agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
You did very well.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the review of potential use of city property currently leased by Cadillac Jacks Incorporated. And this time Dwight Curtis will play Dwight Curtis. If you would, sir, your name and address?
Phil Rodrick, 112th North Main. Welcome.
Are you playing Phil Rodrick?
I'm playing Phil Rodrick, yes. The best I can.
Well, good afternoon again. Well, if you'll recall, just about every two years, we come back with this. Since 2005, the city's been leasing this property. It's located generally right at the corner of West A Street, North Main, and Washington, where they all kind of intersect. See if I get this right. There we go. It's this property right here. You can see right of ways here and CJ's is here. This property here, just to the north of their building, is, belongs to CJ's. And so in the past, we've leased this to them for two years at a time. We charge $50 a month, uses it for parking, and generally it's that simple. But it's always been a question of what the heck are we going to do with this property, if anything? At one time, and what really brought this to the forefront back in 2005, was Paradise Path Task Force. And one of their missions found this as a spot where they might like to have some kind of park. And since that time, Parks and Recreation Commission, Paradise Path Task Force, and the Arts Commission have all agreed that this is not a suitable site for that sort of thing. It's just, it's between two bars, the traffic, it's just a bad spot. So we end up re-leasing it and it's used for parking. And then...
The history of this, Dwight, and I don't think you said this, is that it was created when that part of the couplet was put in. It was a remnant of state land?
Yes.
That the state gave to the city back in?
2002, I believe.
2002, okay.
Yes.
At that time, I was negotiating with the state to buy it and the trade took place for the bridge at the other end of 95 coming in.
Okay. So I've got a few other little slides here. Options to consider with this now that we're not considering it for a park, and that would be to renew the lease without a specified expiration date, basically the same lease just without the expiration date. Would have a termination notice period clause in there, so both sides are protected and can end the lease when needed or renew the lease for five years instead of two. Gives us a little bit of time there.
Try to come back here every two years?
Well, yes. You know, one of these days I'll retire and it won't matter.
Oh, thanks.
We'll make it the seven years.
Then I gotta break somebody else in.
The seven years next time. Of course, we could just not renew the lease and develop it into public parking. We could also divest ourselves of the property or if you've got some other ideas. This here was an example, it was pretty crude here, but putting parking, basically blocking that off, striping out on the road for parking and putting some kind of a, you know, plant cover type material to fill that. But that still falls into the same category as a park. We still have the same issues with that. And then this sort of has a couple of different things. We could do the street striping there. I think we had different ideas going on the same, on two different ideas going here. Or we could do parking.
Three cars only.
Three cars only. So it just doesn't work very well that way. And then I think, Bill, I think Bill...
No, that's when you take my dirt.
Yeah, somebody turned this one in at one time, which actually was pretty good, but this is Phil's property line and the owner has said that he does not want to do that. So you end up with, I mean, this is just not a doable option there. You end up with four, three parking spaces. So in a nutshell, that's where that's at. Back in 2012, the Parks and Recreation Commission was charged with bringing a recommendation to you guys what to do with this and their recommendation was to divest, the city to divest itself of the property. It's not a normal thing that we would do, but that was their recommendation. And so through these options out there, if you wanted that, staff's recommendation is the first one, to just lease it and with no expiration date attached to it. And I guess with that, that would conclude my part. And if Phil's got anything he'd like to say?
Let's see if council has any questions first and then we'll go to Phil.
I don't have a question per se on anything. It's just kind of, is that little chunk serving the city's interest in any way other than collecting $50 a month? It seems like an odd abandoned orphan parcel.
Let's see if he picks up the trash on it. So we've got that benefit.
I pay for the privilege to pick up trash.
I've been in this conversation before, so I'm waiting to see what we decide to do here.
Mr. Rodrick?
I really wish we could just go back to the very beginning when I was negotiating with the state. The state says, their law says, that they have to offer the property, if they're going to abandon it, to the adjacent property owner. And that's the reason Mike got to buy that other triangle that also facilitates his bar, the Corner Club, I'm sorry. And yeah, he got to buy all that triangle in there from the state also. He paid 2,500 bucks for all that back whenever that all happened. I don't even know the year. I wasn't here. And I was, you know, I was happy to work with them and the rule was that whatever an independent appraiser appraised at was the price that I would have to pay to state. And then whatever happened at 95, it all got taken away from me. I'd like to see that come back because the only person that that's going to benefit is me and also the community because I'm still not going to stop from, you know, like your lease says, I really don't have any rights because the lease says anybody can park there.
So it's not exclusive?
So I'm not really getting an exclusive. I just get the privilege of picking up trash. But what I'm also doing is I'm helping the city because if the city owns it, you guys have to do something with it because it becomes a nuisance dirt-wise and you have to grow grass or something on there. So I'm doing you a benefit and if you would just sell it to me, then we're all good. Now you're going to get property taxes on it, which would probably be the same miles of land anyway, but...
Let me ask City Attorney Rod Hall to join us if you would. My understanding while he's coming up is that the state could offer this to the adjacent property owner because at the time it was right of way. It is not right of way to the city, therefore my belief is there's no adjacent property owner consideration on a sale.
And I could not find anywhere where the city would have the power to just declare who they're going to sell it to, an adjacent property owner. Now, the counties, the Board of County Commissioners have a special power under the state statutes that dealing out with county property, if they declare something an irregular or an odd lot, it's usually irregular and the primary value is to an adjacent property owner, they can make that declaration and sell it, if they do an open process with that. For us to sell that, we...
Cities cannot.
Cities cannot. I can't, that's a power that the county has, but for the cities, you know, you'd have to make it, your declaration that, through the city council, that they want to sell it. Then you'd have a hearing on that and describe how you're going to sell it and then they would basically figure out what the fair market value is and sell it to the highest bidder.
Can the city, can the city trade something to the county? Well, really, no, because...
I have no idea.
Well, that just means you passed the smell test at that point. If you're going to do that to try to favor somebody, that's not going to get a...
Well, I just thought we were playing a good hand of poker here. That's all.
And now I see your hand.
Rod, question. If the city were to decide they wish to sell it, they would have to advertise it?
Well, a meeting. You'd have to, to make that declaration that you want to sell it. You'd have a public meeting to see if people, you know, opposition or people are for, and then you'd discuss the process. Basically, pass an ordinance about selling that property.
Does the process require an appraisal or setting a price?
Normally, it would, yes.
Okay. So the city cannot just declare it surplus or whatever and put it up there for anyone that wishes to buy it to come forward?
Well, I think that the city could do that if they wanted to just, didn't worry about a minimum. But you still need to figure out what the price is and then you could consciously say that we'll just sell it to the highest bidder, open it up.
And this is our minimum, but you know...
And, but you don't have to have a minimum, but you'd have to declare that you're not going to require a minimum.
But you can, you can require a minimum as well, right?
Yes. Of what the fair market value is.
Even if you're going through the bid process.
Yes, I think the council has under 50-1402, they can declare the value with a minimum price or they may also declare the property will be offered for sale without establishing a minimum price. So you do have two options.
And we're operating under state code, not city ordinance?
Yes.
In regard to divesting of property?
Yeah, and we'd have to have that power from the state statute.
Okay.
Well, I don't see it doing the city any good in its current incarnation. I'd just as soon divest the city of it through the process that Rod just articulated and hope that the most interested parties wind up with the property so they can best use it. And as was pointed out, it also adds to the tax base of the city, so...
Get a lot overall.
Overall, it's not 50 bucks a month, property tax. I as soon see it just be divested from the city because I don't see it doing any good as it is.
Well, I can remember the conversation last time was everything, you know, the city not wanting to give up property, you know, but to me, you know, it's, you know, 50 bucks a month, that's better than what we'd get for property tax on it, but...
Yeah, we don't have to share that with the county or school district.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So, I mean, that might be your property tax bill, but I mean, we get it all, but...
So what are your wishes, gentlemen?
I think that it probably needs to go to full council, but, you know, I would be either in favor of the first option that Dwight mentioned or divesting ourselves of it, you know, but we would have to somehow put in that first option, some sort of notice period if, you know, say Phil says, "I'll give you 50 grand for it." And okay, well...
Well, Phil is not that stupid.
Have to figure out...
I'm not the brightest bulb in the shop here, but...
You know, figure out a way that, you know, that we can end it, you know, easily on both, for both parties, you know, or say Phil decides, "I don't want to rent this anymore," that type of thing.
So your position is the option of renewing without an explicit date?
Right.
And your preference of the...
Is divesting.
Is just divesting?
Yeah, seeing no long-term interest of the city involved.
Okay. Yes, sir.
If I might, on staff's perspective, I think from administration, we would like to encourage the council to consider item number one. I think there are some downtown streetscape enhancements and public art planning efforts that are likely to occur in the reasonable near future. Having the city retain ownership of the property, lease it to Phil in the meantime, until such time as a decision is made as to whether this could be a site for downtown beautification and meeting the council's goal of trying to expand the perceived area on downtown area north on Main Street. You know, I think until we really finish out those tasks, it would be to the city's benefit to preserve its options, but the lease can certainly accommodate that. The city gets some economic return to property and I think over the time we've leased it, probably more economic return than we would have received if we would have disposed of it. And so it keeps options available to the city.
I think you're missing one of the other options too, because when you take in consideration the triangle, and then I take my property and add it to it, and since I also own the building, that means we can abut it, I can also do something to where we can have like across the street from me, multiple studio condos above us and underground parking for that facility. And that would enhance my land. And that's the reason I never, like the city, I forget who all was screaming at me, to donate my 25-foot there. And I said, "Are you nuts? It's got value." But if I had that triangle, that would give me the full value and I would be able to do something that would be nice for the community. And also, you guys want more housing downtown and that would facilitate all of the above. And I still haven't lost the parking.
Okay. Let's send it to full council. Reorder the options and list the two that these gentlemen have spoken to as their preference as the committee's preference.
Option one and option four.
One and four, yeah. So we don't put them in front of the council as 1, 2, 3, 4 is currently listed under this staff, under this report?
Organize them because all the options are still available to the full council.
They are.
Your recommendation.
We'll go with the full list, but, and you can certainly do it under staff recommendation and then do it as public works finance preferences and I'll, we can make it clear that there wasn't a decision, it was kind of a split thing. But let's move this around a little bit and we will send this to full council, see what they wish to do.
Now, wouldn't we have more property tax revenue if we had some apartments there?
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Dwight.
Thank you.
Phil, as far as I know at the moment, this will be on, will this be on council next Monday?
That's correct.
7:00 PM. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Parks Capital Projects Cost Forecast Report. Again, Dwight Curtis. Looking at Dwight getting ready. Gina, you are doing a fantastic job with the snow today. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, good afternoon again. Okay. Bear with me just a little bit while I explain what this is. This is a Parks Capital Projects Cost Forecast Report. And what this is, it's a long-range development and financial planning process that we need so that we can see into the future of what kind of priorities that we need or have and the costs associated with that for developing our undeveloped properties as well as reinvestments into the present properties that we have in our Parks and Recreation inventory. The reinvestments were based on need and access and costs and in the end, this is a very fluid document. These are just forecasts. Priorities continually change and that can be for most, for any reason that you can just imagine. Changes in leadership, changes in staff, changes in the economic situations, funding opportunities, you just never know. So keep that in mind as we go through this. And I will start out here. It's a little hard to read, but in your packets as well, we started out with a page in what we're calling our assumptions. And this is basically the costs of... the costs of various things that would go into a park. Anything from what a shelter would cost, just a typical twenty by forty shelter, a restroom, some landscaping, a playground, trash cans, you name it. And this would be for a new park. And so we went across from each of our properties and determining what was needed in those parks to keep them vibrant, up to date, the safety things, and then, of course, at the bottom you had your totals.
Dwight, some of those items, a few of those items are new-
Yes.
Things that do not exist now. Others are planned obsolescence replacements for-
These here are existing parks, so a lot of this is replacement, reinvesting.
Okay.
For example, a playground in, what is that, East Gate Park. So here's some more assumptions. Now, these would be, let's see, these are park properties that have not been developed yet, so you can see the costs are just a little bit higher. And so went down the lines, and keep in mind, too, this is what we would figure as a stereo, you know, your typical park. It doesn't mean that's what's going to happen here. When the actual plans for each property take place, this would all be updated. I mean, maybe, just for example, somebody would say, "Well, we would like that just to be a nature park," so what we had planned with playgrounds and all that stuff might not be there. So the costs would change. And of course, this is in line with the master plan where we have timelines to start getting our properties planned. Then we went into the actual forecasting and prioritizing, and 2014 is a little bit sparse. My focus was actually 2015, but there were some things I thought I'd throw in there so you'd see what we're doing in the present fiscal year. But the bottom in yellow are those that are undeveloped at this time, and these up here are developed. And this particular chart just shows out to 2020, so it's five years, and you can see, for example, on Mountain View, a hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred dollars in 2015, and if you went back to the assumptions, that includes the horseshoe pitching clinic, or not clinic, I'm sorry, that's an expensive clinic.
Yes.
Yeah, the courts and some other things. So that's what that is, and then the next one, just, it's the same chart, I just added more years to it, and the last one, you can hardly read it all, and it went out to twenty, I think thirty, or four, something like that. And we were actually asked only to go out to twenty, I can't read it now myself, twenty twenty-five, but there were some things I thought I just needed to halve down, so I just moved it out an extra four or five years.
Is your 2014 number in the current adopted budget?
Yes.
The two-hundred-and-seventy-nine, eight-sixteen?
Yes.
Okay, so and anything beyond that is not yet budgeted?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely correct. And there's no assumption on our part that these will be budgeted. We know that it has to go through the budget process, so-
Or that they'll even be in the order.
Or that they'll be in the order. Right now, this is our best estimate under the current situation that we find ourselves in Moscow for the priorities of the different parks and the developments. There are some things that we might not be able to help. For example, well, it's not on this one, but when the facilities, we have a similar chart for the, a forecast for facilities, we will need to do some re-roofing on the nineteen-twelve center, and it's going to be spendy, but there's a point when you have to do it, or your building's going to fall apart, or you're patch working and it just gets worse, things like that. So, and of course, go through the budgeting process on that. There's no assumptions that it is going to happen. And in a nutshell, that's what this is. We did receive a concern by a citizen about Paradise Path, for example. If you notice, going across there all the way out to 2022, there is nothing until you get to 2022, Waggoner, and find it right there. And the reason for that is, this is capital, it's not your general maintenance and things like that, and at the present time, there were no capital projects planned, actually planned, for Paradise Path other than the Blackbird Crossing, the trail station. And, you know, just quite frankly, when I was putting this together, we had a lot of momentum going along, and I figured before this actually got to council that that would already be built, so-
From donations?
From donations, yeah. The planning, it is at the Landscape Architects Building right now, and they are going a little bit slow, but we should have the completed plans for that within the next couple of weeks. We'll bring that to council for approval of the design, and that in itself, when the public can actually get a good visualization of what they would be possibly donating to, it should help immensely with that. And so I'm still hopeful that that would be constructed this fiscal year, and-
The 2022-year, twenty-five thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar item is repaving Paradise Path?
It's major repairs that might need to be done. It's not a complete repaving. It would be considerably higher if that was-
But not general maintenance?
No, it's a capital-
Not general maintenance, it's not a single project?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and that can change at any time. We could have a flood that could wash part of the path out, you know, you just never know. So like I said, these things can just change, though just the condition of the path could deteriorate faster than we estimated, and it would just move some of this more forward. So, and that can happen with any of these projects. But the primary thing as elected officials and as leaders on the staff, as we're trying to budget and figure things out, are these bottom numbers. And when you think about 2016 needing, you know, a million and a half bucks for some parks, how are we going to get that money? I mean, you know, I mean, that's a lot of money, and, you know, every year after that. So, you know, decisions on, I mean, maybe you want to have a bond and take care of several of these at once, maybe you just reprioritize and get spread further out. Maybe you look at the phasing of constructing these things a little more, bring in more volunteers, just, you have to look at the options based on that bottom line.
Realize that two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand one-hundred-and-thirty dollars you've got in there for Friendship Square, the public restroom-
Yes.
Is a current council goal.
Yes. Yep.
Didn't need to remind you that-
Nope, no, you should see that coming to life here shortly. Tom's, he'll be holding start, I don't know what his exact plan is, but it's the spring, he's supposed to kick off the planning part of that.
Okay.
So, and let's see, in a nutshell, the priorities and conditions change. We'll be updating this annually. It coincides with our 2013 master plan, and the facilities capital projects cost forecast model will be coming hopefully later on this spring. We're still waiting on the results of that facility study and plug those numbers in, and we'll bring that to you as well. So add that with this, plus the one you received a month or so ago from Public Works, you know, you need these to be able to figure this stuff out, and it's really important. And so as far as I know here, I don't think there's any action needed other than accepting of the report.
Yeah, I'm okay with accepting said report.
Me, too. Do you, does this need to go forward to council for an acceptance? What does staff look?
That was my expectation, this was proceeding on the full council, for the council to essentially accept and adopt this as the capital plan for the park facility improvement, knowing that it'll be updated annually over time.
So we probably should put this on the full agenda, so Dwight gets to see if he can do the same presentation?
Yes.
This was rehearsal. This is just rehearsal.
You got it.
Thank you, Dwight.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, Parkview Estates Access Agreement Amendment Request. Les McDonald will be presenting.
Clay Scott's going to come play, too.
Yes, might have some additional information.
And who would you be, sir?
Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington.
Thank you. And apparently you have an able assistant?
Yes, I do. I'm one of the owners.
Who is?
Larry Germer.
Address, please.
Ten oh five Ziegler Road.
Thank you, Larry.
Moscow.
Good afternoon.
I've gained helpers I hadn't anticipated, so we'll press on. Back in about 1999, 2000, there was a project that involved the development of lands on the north end of town, Parkview Estates, and Larry was the principal developer and owner of the property. And from that, there have been a lot of developments happening kind of on that north end, and you're, I think, mostly all familiar with that area and that property. But there is a large remaining piece that is still out there today, which is this large undeveloped chunk right here.
To interrupt you, was Moscow Building Supply a part of that originally?
It was one of the lots within that overall development, as were all these off to the east and up here to the north. The properties essentially bordered by Highway ninety-five, Main Street on the west, Rodeo Drive to the north, and Jefferson on the east. This is Moscow Building Supply here to the south. Take note of where Brent Drive is located, across the highway to the west. We will talk about that briefly in a few minutes. Now, there've been a number of things happen with this property over the last several years. These have included splitting out portions of what was Lot One, Block One into several other parcels. So the council took action on a lot subdivision, lot division process here to create these six lots in the last year.
For duplexes?
And those, I believe, were duplexes, yes, in that area.
For R-three.
R-three zoning, right. And so there's, you know, some homes going in.
They're currently being built on.
Some of those are, yes, that is true. There also was, I believe, some change of ownership on the southern portion of land about this much, as shown on this plat map, which then leaves this remaining chunk here of Lot One, Block One.
And that first part you pointed out went to Moscow Building Supply?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
So what is before, or has been before the council here recently, has been a lot division involving this remaining portion of Lot One, Block One to split off this piece here on the southwest corner, and then leaving the remainder as one big lot, that is what is the remnant. So that's been going through the process, but a question that has arisen in that process is access. How will these parcels be accessed, both from the highway or from Rodeo Drive, and just in general, what will be the access to this area? Well, back in 2000, 2000, there was an agreement established between the City of Moscow and the Idaho Transportation Department that allowed for the installation of a new street, which was built as part of the subdivision, Rodeo Drive, tying into the state highway system. Anytime we put a new road out to connect to a state highway, there's a new intersection that actually has to be approved by the state before it's constructed. So that was done, and agreement was issued back in May of 2000. There was, interestingly enough, though, an additional clause in that that didn't really pertain to Rodeo Drive directly, but had to do with access to this Lot One, Block One. And it essentially said that access in the future had to be through a sixteen-foot-wide entry that was going to be skewed in some fashion. This is actually a copy of a section of the drawing that was attached to that agreement, that these were kind of the roadway plans for the highway back then.
Who gets credit for that?
That I do not know. I suspect that may have been jotted in there by the ITD folks, perhaps Dave Couch, who was the transportation engineer back then.
Or Napkin.
Yeah, it's interesting that it was put in in that manner, but that was the case back in 2000. And I suspect, and again, you know, we're going off, we're kind of speculating here, but I suspect that part of the thinking was that, well, they'd, you know, like to see most of the access off of Rodeo Drive accessing these properties rather than, you know, more commercial driveways. So this was intended to be an exit-only skewed-
Entrance only.
Excuse me, entrance, exit off the highway, entrance only into the property, skewed access from the highway. So fast forward to today.
And then, before you go on, and then immediately north of that, we can see a right-turn lane on the Rodeo Drive-
Yes.
A northbound through lane.
That's correct.
An island-
Yes, there.
Striped or raised, one or the other.
Correct.
And a southbound Highway ninety-five-
Yes, yes.
Lane.
With, to the north of the intersection, a southbound left-turn lane onto Rodeo.
None of that matches what's there today.
That was not what was ultimately constructed, that is true.
Can you remember, not having warned you, can you remember off the top of your head what is out there today on the highway in terms of lanes?
As a matter of fact, I can. And we'll get to that in just a moment.
Okay.
In fact, if you want, let me just back up, and we'll make it easy. There you go, there's the picture. So what you'll see out here today is two complete northbound lanes that pass all the way through the Rodeo Drive intersection. To the north of that, the outer lane goes away. But through this property frontage and to the north of the intersection, for a little distance anyway, it is two full northbound lanes. There is a two-way left-turn lane in the middle rather than any kind of turn pocket. There is the southbound dedicated left-turn pocket, so that was constructed in that manner. And then the southbound single lane is consistent with that plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so a little different than what we saw in that sketch. What's before us today is the possibility of going to the Idaho Transportation Department to talk to them about a different type of approach. And what is being requested by the property owners, the applicants, would be a combined approach, roughly thirty feet in width, that would be located here just really to the north of the Minniki property, parcel that was split off, with the idea that it would be a shared approach that could serve this new lot that's being developed, plus whatever remaining portion of the lot is developed in whatever manner it's developed in the future. So this would serve all of this Lot One, Block One. Would not preclude future access to the north off of Rodeo from city streets as well, so depending on how this property eventually develops, you know, it could have a need or a desire for additional access off of Rodeo, that's still a possibility. But as far as the highway is concerned, the thought is a shared thirty-foot-wide access road into, or access drive into Lot One, Block One.
And that would be an ingress egress drive?
Egress, yes, that is correct.
Is that directly across from Brent Drive?
It is not. I will show you on this drawing roughly its location. There's a yield sign that sits out here, and it's about in that area. So you can see where Brent is off to the west. We're approximately a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five feet, give or take, from this driveway location up to about the center line of Brent Drive. It's roughly another two-hundred-and-twenty feet from Brent up to Rodeo.
Okay, I guess my question would be then, and maybe you're going to get to it, would the state be more liable to have it there because it's farther away from Rodeo, or would they be more liable to have it directly across from Brent Drive?
From Brent Drive. Well, it's a good question. Generally speaking, I would normally- Generally speaking, I would normally recommend that it be across from Brent Drive, just so that we have, you know, more of a standard-type intersection, if you will. The challenge with that, of course, is that it does put that driveway just that much closer to Rodeo. And, you know, over time, this intersection will get busier and busier. You know, there is the potential in the long-range plan that Rodeo could be extended out to the west to make it a four-way intersection. So proximity to that intersection, possibility of a signal in the future, it just kind of complicates that intersection. So from that perspective, further away is better. In some ways, I'd even prefer to be a little further south to get away from the Brent Drive intersection.
Then you're getting into that lot.
Right, but then you get into that lot, and there's always so much room here before they run out of ground. The fortunate thing is Brent Drive is, you know, not going any further through. It is a, you know, fairly limited volume, so we're not anticipating seeing much change from what's out there today. There could be...
Across-streeted Brent Drive doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Coming all the way across?
Yes, having a T-intersection, I mean, having a cross-intersection.
No, I mean, through traffic from one side to the other, Brent didn't...
Even if it were built that way, you'd probably want to put a concrete median out there to keep it from happening.
You might, you might.
It's not gonna be like East Street and 95.
No, probably not, because we have better separation. And again, you know, the volumes here, well, obviously depends on what kind of development eventually happens here. You know, it is limited somewhat in size in terms of, you know, how big of a traffic generator you might get. The Brent Drive intersection volumes are not great, you know, so I don't really see a lot of conflict here. I think this location probably could work. So the steps we have ahead of us, if we choose to proceed, would be to make a request of ITD to modify the agreement between the city and ITD from 2000, to change that driveway access from a single skewed entrance-only 16-foot-wide drive to something like this, which would be a more standard perpendicular 30-foot-wide ingress/egress easement without turn restrictions. Now, one of the options that's out there, and ITD may very well, you know, put it out as an interim or intermediate step, if you will, would be to make it a right-in and right-out only, because they're trying to avoid that left-turn movement out onto the highway. Well, I'm not sure that serves the property very well, because if you're looking at commercial enterprise, most of that business is coming from the south, further down in town, coming out to the site. There's probably not a lot of folks that are gonna head out and go north. So I'm not sure that would really provide much benefit to the property. So, I guess that's...
It puts persons that have come from the south to the property into a now, how do I get back to where I want to go, situation.
Right, and the options would be, if you are looking at just the southerly lot here, would be to turn right and turn onto Rodeo, and then come back down Jefferson or all the way over to Polk and back into town, if you could do that.
That doesn't make much sense either, because that routes traffic back through neighborhoods and far end of Jefferson, as it gets back down onto Morton Street, is...
Grinding.
Travel.
Yep, yes, it is.
And that's not a good thing either. And plus, I think putting that ingress/egress there also essentially precludes the ability to place another ingress/egress on 95 from Block 1, Lot 1.
Further north?
Yeah.
Well, at this point, ITD has approved only one and just an ingress. And so what we'd be asking to do is expand that to one...
Some kind of an intersection, we're just looking to change it a bit. But trying to put another ingress to 95 north of there looks like it would probably be frowned upon severely.
Well, this one would be intended to serve all the remaining property.
And that is exactly my biggest question.
At least, I don't know if staff would support a request. I assume the property owner would not make a request.
Yeah, Les has done a fantastic job of representing the...
So the intent would be that this 30-foot ingress/egress would serve all the remaining undeveloped portion of property, not belonging to the building supply.
Unless anything on Rodeo Drive is originally contemplated as well. There's nothing...
Yeah, I suppose there's still potential. You could cut out a piece, you know, up here on this edge, similar to ones across Rodeo, and have it access from Rodeo. But this would be the only highway access.
Yep.
So what's before you today is really looking for affirmation that the council would like to have staff proceed with a written request to ITD to modify the 2000 agreement from that 16-foot ingress-only to a 30-foot ingress/egress in generally this location, on behalf of the property owners, basically.
Les, who was the skewed ingress-only document with?
That is part of the agreement between the city and ITD. That's the one that's in your packet. It was included. It's actually referenced in Section 3 about the city shall... It's actually provide the state the deed for some highway right-of-way, and then it goes on to say that this right-of-way deed is to specify the new right-of-way as controlled access, with the only access to the highway being designated as the new city street, and a future northbound 16-foot-wide skewed entrance-only driveway to Lot, to Block 1, Lot 1 of Parkview Estates.
So it's incumbent upon the city to make the request of ITD for a modification, if that is what we wish to do?
That is correct. And it is possible that if ITD is willing to make the change to the agreement, that we may also have to modify the terms of a deed that was previously recorded, so we'll have to check that one a little further. But yes, the agreement is between the city and ITD that makes those stipulations, and that drawing, of course, that I showed you was attached as part of that agreement. So that's why it is before the city to request a change.
Well, presuming ITD did the drawing, I'd like to publicly congratulate them on a remarkable piece of engineering. What do you got?
You know, I'm in favor of pursuing on it. As long as it works for you guys, I mean, there's no sense in us going after something that you don't want.
Could I make a couple comments? One of the reasons we want this is we see this as the only one we need. When this all went on, we didn't know what was gonna go on there. But now that Mineki wants to move in there, Pat's bought that 125, and now they're buying 125. We put this access on our property so that it would serve the rest of the property. And we were hoping, we don't know, but maybe a convenience store and a service station will take that corner, and they'll have access in, and then they can come out onto Rodeo. But I'm afraid that if we don't get this, that Mineki will, they'll drop out. And they've already approved this site as a location with the understanding they can turn back into town. I mean, they are retail.
And Larry, if approved, the construction of this access would be between yourselves as owner of the larger remaining lot and whoever is buying your split-off lot?
Right, we're gonna build that, we'll build that entry in there, and then Mineki turns into their property, no cost to the city. And when we originally did this, it called for us to have a turn lane up there, but Moscow Building built, and they had to have a turn lane out. Well, in theory, we didn't have to continue that lane. It could've came out, came back, and came in, but as, I feel as good citizens and developers, we decided to widen that the whole length and take care of it at that time.
And brought your checkbook to prove it.
And we paid for it, yes. And what we hope to do is, when that gets done, is to have maybe two or three approaches off of Rodeo for the rest of it. So all that traffic outside of this one will all go through Rodeo, because that's also been built that way to take that traffic. So that's what we're asking for.
So really, it's just a matter of changing what was originally contemplated by way of an entrance-only skewed into a perpendicular entrance/exit, and serving the larger needs of the entire parcel as opposed to just one property, which is also good. And I don't see it interfering horribly with Brent in any terms of traffic, because that's lightly used and well enough separated from rodeos that, I think, to me, it makes good sense in the overall scope of the project.
It's real key, though, is getting the rest of that developed and getting some retail up there that we've been hoping to get in here.
Scott, anything?
They did a phenomenal job. What else I could add to that?
Okay. Bill, and Les, I have heard ITD say that they are looking toward Rodeo and 95 as the next signalized intersection north of D. Who would end up putting those horribly expensive signals in, and at what point? Crystal Ball answer, probably.
Well, as part of the original plat, there was a requirement of the traffic impact study be accomplished for essentially the Lot 1, Block 1 portion. It was part of the plat, but it was really tied to Lot 1, Block 1, as we reached that point that it would have to be performed on behalf of the plat for that intersection of Rodeo and the area.
And that's not yet been done?
That has not yet been done, but that is pending.
Well, the study hasn't been done, but we have, we've reached that tipping point.
We have reached the point with the Mineki project as, you know, the next developing piece of Lot 1, Block 1, that that triggers that report be accomplished. And so I believe that is in the works. Out of that, we'll have to see what the impacts are of the development as a whole. You know, there is the potential that that could result in meeting warrants for signalization at that intersection, which then could put it upon the property owner to, you know, mitigate those impacts of the development. You know, that is yet to be seen, how that will work out. So we'll be talking about that as we get a report back and can assess what the impacts are, and then how we best proceed from there.
And we're working with the city right now to get some traffic counts up on rodeo so that this impact study is accurate. We don't want to just throw something together that doesn't matter.
Pending this sale.
Yeah.
Realizing that the, for lack of a better term, strip mall on rodeo is pretty vacant right now, I believe.
Right. We would look at, you know, the possible developments on this lot. Basically, it might look, once we put together the study, we have the template, and then it might kick it down the road with knowing that Mineki's not gonna increase traffic immensely on the peak hours. So it might kick it down to, if we can get a high-density development in there, that that would, you know, might be the trigger.
Essentially, the study will have to look at full development of all the property within the subdivision, and what impact it has along with other, you know, ambient traffic that's coming from the neighborhoods that pass through the area and what...
You get some amount of East Moscow to Polk to Rodeo...
Some of that.
To corridor lane traffic.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Anything else from any of you gentlemen?
No?
Yeah, I would forward this with recommendation for approval, then. To write the letter, yes.
I think it can probably go on consent, and if any of the other council people wish to talk about it, they're welcome to pull it. Okay, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
So is this made of the council? Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Next Monday, 7:00 PM, and consent agenda comes up early, so...
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we have a report on an item called community branding, led by Jim Piffner and Gina Turucio of the Chamber of Commerce.
I've turned on the smoke.
Turned on the light.
Kind of you. No, I turned on the smoke.
Hold your mic over there.
It's Callan. Good afternoon. We're here to report on a community branding effort that is currently being considered and is moving underway, beginning back in January 17th, actually. Roger Brooks International, Roger Brooks from that company, came and presented to quite a group of people, including...
Hold up just a minute. If y'all don't mind, thank you. You're perfectly welcome to talk all you rush outside. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
All right, we had Gina Turucio there, our executive director from the Moscow Chamber of Commerce, as well as Melanie Zimmer from the Best Western Plus University, who's also a chamber member. She's two of the three organizers of the group. Kami McClure from the University of Idaho is the third, who really helped get this effort underway. At that original meeting, one of the things that we're most excited about is the people that joined us at the table that are still inside, still excited and still enthused about this potential project. And that included interim president Don Burnett, Chris Murray, several of his staff, and then from the city, we had council member Walter Steed, Mayor Lambert, Gary Redner, myself, and we continue to all participate in this process as we move forward. What Roger provided that day was some insight into developing a community brand that is more than a generic sort of thing to hang your hat on. So when you talk about that we have a great quality of life, that would be something very generic. What he talked about was helping a community through a process of assessing, researching, community involvement, and looking at what is it that makes you special and unique from others around you, and then how to capitalize on that and invest in that, so that not only do you get the growth in your community, but you also attract others to visit. Lots of different features that would go into that, once you determine, you know, who you're going to be or who you are. He gave an overview, the talks about the different communities he worked with, and those are all available online. And then since that time, we looked at his process, have looked at other folks or other consultants, and have decided putting together a request for proposals would be the best next step. Everybody's still very interested and excited, and have even talked about obligating a certain amount of financial backing to it, primarily in the amount of about $10,000 per entity, and that would be the University of Idaho, the Chamber of Commerce, and then the city, of course, pending council approval. The next step, then, would be to put that request for proposal together, outline a scope of services, timeline, things like that, bring that back to the committee and council, and talk about the financial commitment that the council would like to make at that point. And Gina is here to talk about her grant and some of the great things she's done on it. She's really done a good job of getting this underway with her two partners in crime there. So it's an exciting prospect right now.
Very much, and thank you for the chance to come and visit with you. As you know, we, as part of our, well, our annual focus, we work towards a grant from the Idaho Tourism Council every year. And that's based on the bed tax that the state collects from all of the regions. And this past year, we were lucky enough to receive a pretty good, pretty good grant, was about $73,000. And so part of that grant was this initial meeting with Mr. Brooks. And we just are just so excited about it. We honestly could not have a better time, have a better group of people at the table, have a better, just, you know, all the cards are in place where they need to be right now. We today submitted an amendment to our grant, because it does pretty much mean a very serious focus shift to put a good chunk of money, and Mr. Steed, I will tell you, is between $25,000 and $30,000 of our grant, towards this branding effort. I believe this will be the way for us to not only market our community as a tourist destination, but then also a place to bring your students, a place to bring your parents, a place to bring you business. So we're just very, very excited about this. We have identified eight or nine different groups that we would submit this RFP to, who have worked with this branding function before. I also have spent about an hour today, I will again tomorrow as well, speak to comparable communities with universities in them, and the chambers within these communities, to see what they have done in the past, if they've done any branding, and if so, who they used, so we can get a big enough sample set, and maybe a more representative sample set. Mr. Brooks has not had the pleasure, pain, or any adjective like that of working with a university community. We are a...
And during, to interrupt, during his workshop, if that's what we were calling it, he expressed the fact, or recognized the fact, a university community is different than pick-a-town.
Exactly.
So that's what started the question of university community special focus.
Well, and we want to, you know, this is very, very real money for us, and so we want it to go to the right place. So this upfront research is very important. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We're excited, but we're doing all of the legwork that's not quite as fun.
So at the end, at the other end of the project, once a branding idea is developed, what's the forum? What's the audience for? Where do we present this to actually get some efficacious yields back out of it?
I think there's several steps that we need to go through, and Mr. Brooks outlined these very clearly, that one, you decide what you want to be. Two, you make sure you are that thing before you tell anybody you are that thing. And then you slowly start to invest in that. So there's... So there's communities that, there was Alpena, Michigan, that decided they wanted to focus on being a sanctuary. So they did things like past ordinances where you couldn't ride snowmobiles and four-wheelers in town. You had to keep, there were certain standards that they required for different businesses and things, which is kind of the far end of the spectrum, but all under the guise that we want people to come here and be rested and relaxed, and take in a quiet moment at the lake, and do those sorts of things. So it's constant work is one of the things he's cautioned us against, and putting together the right team to champion this cause beyond its initial rollout. And in a lot of cases, there's not a big grand opening, here's who we are now. It's, okay, you start to change the slogans on your visitors' guides. You just start to merge these things into the way you do business, and you become your brand, not the logo, but what you want to be. That's the thing that you are special and you are known for.
And that's the other thing that struck me out of Brooks's workshop, was that one of you used the phrase, well-ago quality of life, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
What town doesn't?
Exactly.
The trick, according to him.
It sucks to live here. Nobody brands that.
That would not be a good brand.
It's not going to work for you either.
That would not be.
But, you know, the trick, according to Mr. Brooks, who's done several hundred of these.
Yes, sir.
But no university towns.
Not yet.
Is to identify what is unique about your community, and then how to use that to assist you to do the things you'd like to do. I think the beautification efforts that we're working on, Bill's working on, through the city council, go to try to get the entrances of this town look a little better, will fit right in with this in terms of getting parents who drive their kids here, and want to look at the community and look at the university, feel better about it, and so forth, so.
This is, if I can add, this is a fairly lengthy process. Mr. Brooks estimated about a year, and so there's.
Short time, isn't it?
It's not long.
Well.
We're really excited about it right now.
Actually, we're really excited in a year, sounds like.
Well, really, well, that's just almost like tomorrow.
Yeah.
There'll be a lot of public input, there'll be a lot of stakeholder input time. So we want to be sure that we're not the only ones, or the cheerleading squad isn't the only ones that buy into this brand, but then we'll have one that fits our community and fits it very well at the end of this process, so.
Ever forward. Endeavor to persevere.
Endeavor to persevere.
We hope to bring you back an RFP and the official request for funding here in the next couple of weeks to committee, so.
RFP should be hopefully by the end of the week, if I can stop sleeping.
That's fast.
And then Les?
Nope, I'm going to be interested to hear how things develop and how we can apply this to everybody's best benefit, concrete steps to actually apply it.
What's really interesting is this is not only just a Moscow project, the state is watching. We are one of the first communities in, well, university communities in the state to do this kind of thing. They're already asking if they can be invited. So it's kind of a neat moment that we're in the spotlight on a whole other level as well, so.
That helps, too.
Okay, what's needed from us?
This is a report today.
Okay.
So the next step will be Gina and Jen and the rest of the group will work on developing the scope of services in the RFP document. At that point in time, there'll probably be a better refinement to the budget number and then the formal request for council approval of funding. So staff will look at the level of funding and where that could potentially come from under the current fiscal year.
Is that going to hold up, putting out the RFP?
Well, I think the council needs to authorize the.
The RFP will be done by the chamber, is my understanding. The chamber will be the contracting.
Entity.
Entity to the vendor.
So presumably, the chamber would like to have the formal council's approval and authorization for funding before the RFP is published.
So the burden is on the chamber to make that decision?
I'm tired already.
In terms of we cannot put this RFP on the street without knowing we've got a way to pay for it, I guess is what I'm saying.
If I was a chamber, I think I'd like to make sure that all the stakeholders and the governing boards of the stakeholders have signed to commit that funding of the project before the RFQ is published.
You need to realize.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess I get to sleep a little more, that's okay.
Well, my point I was trying to make was that I think it's incumbent upon the chamber to decide what they wish to do. If you're waiting on the city to approve funds, with this, with nothing being scheduled for a week from today, that means the earliest it could go before council would be three weeks from today, unless there's a fifth Monday in there somewhere, and I hadn't looked at the calendar.
No.
It's not going to be in February.
We're good.
But at any rate, realize the way we do business.
The timeframe.
The timeframe.
And we don't want to move forward without all three entities on board. So we will adjust our schedule.
I'm not, I don't know if this is the time and place for it, but I'm not sure why you couldn't. You don't have, you don't have a, you know, until you get responses back and find out that Acme Branding, Inc. of Omaha, Nebraska is who you've got to have and what their price is.
Perhaps.
I'm not sure that, you know, what number to give to the Moscow City Council, a request to the council for funding.
Yeah, that's a good point.
To be continued.
Yeah, those are obviously two approaches. The first wish is to identify the scope, identify what the budget is, include that information in the RFP.
Chambers are, if nothing, but optimistic.
And then have the council understand where are the deliverables, where are the outcomes, where are the scope of services that were received for the money that's being asked to the council. The alternate approach should be go out and conduct the RFQ/RFP first, and then look at the pricing that comes back, and then approach the council at that point.
And you can tell the council exactly what the money's going to buy.
The challenge, of course, is you don't want to have these consultants responding to an RFP that funding has not been solidified for yet. And so, I mean, my general recommendation would be identify the general scope, anticipated budget, publish that along with the RFP.
Bill, I personally respond to multiple RFPs per year with the clause in them saying, if funding is secured.
Sure. So those are two different approaches. And ultimately, the council.
Thank you both.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you do as well in front of the administrative committee your first time as you did this?
Yeah.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.